Thanks.
It's a cute little can you got there?
Okay. Go ahead and call the September twelfth meeting of the Raleigh County Order. Please, everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And yes, to all those that are listening this morning, don't mind the jackhammer. I mean, that's going on behind us. It's only been going off for like five weeks. So.
You only hear a weak feeling.
Yeah, exactly. And everybody over across the way as well, so. Hopefully they get whatever it is they're doing done. I would say a reasonable amount of time, but it's not been reasonable or. Construction season around here, ladies and gentlemen, so I guess we've just got to stay used to it, so whatever. Uh, with that in mind, we'll start off with some public comments this morning. Anybody? Derek, you're already there. Just give some public comments. All right.
Uh, it's Gilman.
Oh.
Uh, just to tell the board, there's not going to be that executive session ten fifteen.
Gosh. It's freezing up underneath me here.
Hey.
Hurry up and keep going.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You know, admission of comments. Quick, quick, quick. Go, go, go. Appreciate that.
Minimum comments. Oh, I've. Um, missed a meeting and a few events this last few days because of some personal things going on, so we didn't get. But I did make it yesterday. They had a drug court graduation. I went to Port House. They they really make it a special event, and it's great to see the success of that program. What I got.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Tuesday morning, I was on K-Man's in focus radio program. Um, Vivian joined me. Um, uh. When we discussed various county business issues, including the twenty twenty-five budget, uh, revenue neutral rate, L E P P grant application deadline, and an update on the Keith Lagoon project, uh, progress on the EMS building, uh, election information, um, Ra- the Raleigh County Wildfire Protection Plan and immunizations available at the Health Department. So we discussed quite a few things too. Um, that, uh, morning and afternoon, I did, uh, participate in two lengthy committee meetings at my church. Later that evening, I watched the presidential debate.
Sorry.
Yeah, I know.
I did not watch this.
Well, it was, I had a big laugh over the animals that have been being eaten. I tell you what, that was. That's gonna live through the whole campaign.
So. Had a good laugh over the lack of moderation of the entire thing.
Yeah, they didn't do it.
Horribly unprofessional. Not surprised. Yeah.
Well, yeah, it was better than the first. Uh, Wednesday, I headed to the nine-one-one memorial ceremony at Fort Riley, but long story short, didn't make it. Um, I did get an updated visitor pass finally.
That was an easier process, I hope. For me, it took about ten minutes.
It took forever.
Sorry. Yeah. Oh, if you were at the gate, you had to go all the way back around.
But it's a story. Yeah, they're they're all messed, you know, the whole thing is a mess.
They're gonna be doing that on a yearly basis instead of three-year basis on these AIA's now.
Okay, well, let's see. Then that afternoon, I went over today's meeting and agenda documents. And I had a bone density test at my doctor's office that afternoon, so I couldn't make it to that. So. And later I did practice, uh, with my bell choir. That's all I've got.
Okay, well, for me, it's been quite a week, actually. Uh, Monday afternoon, I met with, uh, Tracy Anderson from Anderson Night Architects and several others to look and discuss the recent design plans for the riverfront down along the Kansas River. Uh, it's a pretty in-depth plan, lots of possibilities. Um, the goal to find state and federal funds to, and maybe some other charitable means to build the long-term plan. Um, I think their goal is to do it in phases. Um, thanks. They're gonna be coming in front of us next month. It's gonna say this campaign, no, the meeting. Got them on the agenda already, so to discuss that. So we'll, uh, have some further discussions about that. Um, Tuesday morning, I provided some opening remarks and a welcome to start the twenty twenty-four Kansas Emergency Management Association's conference uh, over at the Hill Garden Inn. Um, honored to have the opportunity to talk to emergency management officials that cover all the hundred and five Kansas counties, uh, as well as the Kansas Department of Emergency Management, theme, uh, officials from the theme were there as well. Brigadier General Michael, I'm gonna chop this name up, Vern. I'm gonna go with that. Um, Adjunct General and Director of Emergency Management at Fort Riley. Um, yeah, pretty. Pretty comprehensive update on some things that we should be thinking about and worried about here locally. Um, as well as the new Fort Riley Garrison Commander Colonel Jerry, uh, Nunzato Junior and, uh, Mayor Susan, I haven't checked. Also said a few words, uh, to open up the conference. A lot of people there, um, didn't know exactly what to expect, there were quite a few people there, and it seems like, uh, this year, all those association conferences seem to be floating to Manhattan, of course, always will be um, here, uh, in the spring as well, so. Uh, Tuesday evening, I had dinner with the sixty-plus group out of the city of Ogden at the community center there downtown. Had a wonderful fried chicken meal. I haven't had fried chicken in a long time. Yeah. Um, uh, homemade fried chicken. It wasn't bought from anywhere either. That's that's what made it special. And I had a chance to talk and discuss some of the challenges and issues they're facing as a group, uh, ask some questions, uh, and, um, address some concerns that I think we've had as a board in terms of funding for those things. Um, it's quite insightful, really enjoyed the time spent, stepped around and checked out their business meetings, see how they kind of work and operate. Uh, most of their focus is kind of on that scenic overlook that's out there, which is still being talked about and discussed. Uh, yesterday morning, attended the September eleventh Day of Remembrance breakfast at the Country Club, sponsored by the, uh, Flint Hills Volunteer Center. Two guest speakers were Brigadier General, uh, Bill Turner, who was, um, assigned to the Chief of Staff of the Army, uh, so he was working at the Pentagon on September eleventh, as well as his wife. Um, his wife Alyssa was actually in the same wing as where the plane crashed. Um, if she had not chosen to go downstairs to the gym with a fellow colleague, she probably wouldn't be here. Um, just shows you, um. Just shows you the validity of that particular day. Um, he spoke at how that obviously greatly affected his family and um, just kind of his career and everything else since then. Um, I I know, uh, General Turner personally is a really good guy. Um, has a very distinguished career, uh, post, before, during, and post that, so just to put that out there. Second speaker was, uh, Kevin. His nickname is Hank Walker, and his wife Patty. They discussed their experiences on nine eleven. And also when Kevin was nearly killed by an IED in Iraq in May of two thousand and four. Uh, spent twenty-two days in a coma on life support. They almost took him, well, they did take him off life support, and twenty-four hours later, he somehow miraculously came back to life. He's still with us. Um, lost his left eye, um, caused some permanent damage from that, but uh, still chose to serve and, uh, is still serving as we speak, uh, at Fort Riley, so, uh, in the recruiting type of ways, so. Um, just an amazing story if you had the chance to hear it. I, words I put down here just can't sum that up, so. Uh, also Wednesday morning, just for the record, I did attend the ceremony up on Fort Riley, so we did have it covered. Um, and there was a spot for you, so. Uh, I had a chance to talk to Senator Reddy and Representative Carlin, and we were asking, and I'm like, well, I don't know, but, um. Um, so anyway, um, they had us both together too, and they did tell them that, uh.
Doesn't work.
Yes, that might be the best thing to do in the future, but, um, they set it up how they set it up, so it is. It was a pretty quick ceremony, after listening to some open remarks and invocation, um, as well as the National Anthem, we heard some remarks from the new Garrison Commander, uh, Gerald Nuzoto, followed by a moment of silence for those that were lost on nine eleven and, uh, and those who have been fighting the global war on terror. Uh, Garrison Commander Nuzoto and Sergeant Command Major John Adkerson, uh, laid a wreath at the nine eleven memorial. Don't know if you've seen the nine eleven memorial up there. It's kind of cool how they've laid that out. It's uh, two towers and it's a stone structure around there in the shape of a Pentagon, and they had a bunch of flags and all fifty state flags and stuff out there. Uh, we're all watching one particular horse. I don't know what you call them. Um. That's some flags and stuff, but there was one particular horse that just really wasn't having it.
And we were taking.
Yes, yes. He was, uh, leading the brigade. Let's just put it that way. And so we're all watching that pretty closely, getting, uh, um, having fun with that, so. Uh, and then, uh, after they laid that wreath, they followed by a three volley salute, and of course played the taps and a few other songs by the First Infantry Division Band. Uh, yesterday afternoon, I also had my first Teams call with the new fiscal year with NACO's Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. Uh, after some opening remarks and introductions by our new Chair Angela Connolly, she's Commissioner from Hennehan County, Minnesota. Um, no Clackamas County anymore, so, um, she's still on the committee as a Vice Chair, but, uh, it kind of changes, um, every year. Um, our first guest speaker was Kiara Pakic. Uh, she's a Deputy Assistant for Grants Programs to the Office of Community Planning at HUD. Uh, she discussed the HUD Section one oh eight Legacy Challenge Program and the Pro Housing, um, Initiative. Uh, Speaker number two was, uh, Eric Troria, um, that's the Housing Lead at the National Economic Council with the White House. And he discussed the recent White House House Administration Supply Plan Updates. And, uh, after, um, that fall, there's a pretty good Q and A that came with that, as you probably imagine. Next up was our usual legislative update from Capitol Hill from Michael Matthews, who's our Legislative Director for the Committee. And, uh, lastly, we just had a quick open and, uh, discussion and close. Um, Wednesday afternoon, I did take some time to stream the K-State State of the University address given by President Lyndon and, uh, some others that were part of that. Didn't catch a hundred percent of it, but what I did catch indicated to me that seems like the university has got a good vision and heading in the right direction, which, you know, obviously is the most important. Uh, let's see. Wednesday afternoon, and the reason why I streamed that is, um, went over to the Port House and caught the, uh, Raleigh County Drug Court Ceremony, um, graduation of the twentieth member. Twenty. If you told me. That's only been in existence now for a little over two years, so, um, finding a lot of success with that. The success rate is still at a hundred percent is what I'm being told, so that's really, really good. Um, that was held in a, uh, kid, Judge Kendra, Kendra Lewis' courtroom. Well attended. There was a lot of people there. Um. Gave a couple speeches. Um, the, uh, graduate himself gave a speech and said one thing in his speech that I'd probably start using. If you have a Plan B, you're a loser. If you have a Plan B, you're a loser. Think about that a little bit. Um, yeah, um, really good. They had some cakes and refreshments. Said it was very well attended. Um, last evening, I attended the September Business After Hours hosted by Saint Gordon Associates, as well as the K-State Foundation at the new Office Park Building. Very well attended. There was a whole bunch of people there. Um, amongst there was even super fan Robert Lipson. Had a really good conversation with Robert, yeah. Um, we probably spoke for about fifteen minutes. It was a really good conversation. Uh, men's basketball coach, uh, Jerome Tang was there. Um, he drew out all the cards for the, the gift prizes and stuff and, uh, spoke a little bit about the upcoming season. Uh, amazing, uh, twenty twenty-five recruiting, got the number one recruit, number three, number seven, number ten, and number ninety-three. Um, coming to campus or already have been to campus, so. Uh, if you're saying we can't recruit and bring, uh, good quality kids here in athletics, uh, you're wrong. So. Uh, if you haven't had a chance, check out that new office building. You should. It's pretty immaculate. They've set it up really, really well. Uh, they finished it two months ahead of schedule and about a million dollars under budget. So, post-COVID, that's pretty impressive if you ask me, so. And with that, that's all I've got this.
Ready for business?
Yep.
First item we have is employee action forms. Ramsey McBay, new hire Traffic Control Tech. Excuse me, the Public Works Department, Ethan Wagner, new hire Volunteer Firefighter. All three please sign. Commissioner, have any topics for joint city-county meeting?
Not this month, but like I said, the Rumorfront project will be on next month, so it's here.
Okay. Any topics for intergovernmental luncheon?
Because I have a speaker right.
I haven't seen a speaker for intergovernmental. All of you want to attend if they do have one?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Rich, do you have the resolution?
Um, uh, plans, you want to attend intergovernmental? Uh, sure. Ryan?
I'll go as well, sir.
No topics. Uh, have addition to the business meeting commissioners, uh, be a resolution appointing Dr. Carrie Hurrell as local health officer to act as consultant directing the Health Department, Administrator on program and related medical and professional matters to act in an advisory capacity to the Board of Health, County Board of Health.
Commissioner, so this is something, uh, statute required. A circumstance we really need to.
Need to make a motion?
Yep, need a motion on it, commissioners.
What is a motion? Resolution number? Uh, I would make a motion, um, to approve resolution number zero nine one two two four, appointing Dr. Carrie Hurrell, a local health officer, to act as consultant directing the Health Department Administrator or on program and related medical and professional matters and to act in an advisory capacity to the County Board of Health.
Second. So it's moved and seconded to do whatever that motion just said, because I don't have the resolution. So, uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Let's go, Ken. Okay, thank you. It's all procedural, right?
A long one.
Seriously, this guy's really, really good in this one. Really, really bad.
There's no way between.
A long process.
Well, it'd be nice if they could kind of back off while we're meeting, but.
Gas here is only important in the winter. I mean, we could get by. Little big bonfire in the middle here. It's obviously, it'd be alright.
With the gas line.
Couldn't replace it a little at the mic.
Didn't think that would completely do this, I suppose.
Uh, minutes left, commissioners?
Well.
It changes.
Those were proven minutes from the September ninth meeting.
I would second that.
They moved and seconded to improve the minutes as written from the.
September ninth.
Thank you. September ninth, the Riley County Commission, and just went blank. All in favor?
Alright. Uh, tentative agendas, look, commissioners?
Good.
Okay.
Any items for next week's press conference?
Okie dokie, next year, Mr. Holman at nine o'clock. Well, look at the news, right? I bet they can. Front page does, which came forward.
Yes, I don't want. Here it is.
Commissioners, I went and asked them, and they were happy to knock it off until ten fifteen, so now we'll be able to hear ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have to notice like the arms on that guy or something? I mean, he'd been going out for like a half an hour straight. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I've been on the back of one of those before, I.
What's the matter with?
It's pretty impressive.
He was, it's on a, uh, I I was having the exact same thoughts too, but, uh, he's using one of those. It's, uh, one of those jackhammers. It's mounted to the arm of a back.
That's why I can keep going so long.
Yeah.
That now.
I was impressed. See that, or the guy is giving Arnold Schwarzenegger.
That's what I thought. Just thinking like The Rock or something.
Yeah. I would have been impressed.
What else? Or just to do.
Having fun over there?
Just do a little tour. It's like they want to know your everything. I mean, it's fine. Please review your.
You guys are making it sound more and more enticing for me not to sign up for that.
I think you're gonna be impressed by going.
Yeah, well, I know. I'm anxious to go, but I didn't realize. I mean, this is a little.
This is how I feel when I'm at an airport.
Congratulations.
That anxious to go.
You can be, I don't know, I said, you'll be partying on an assessment on file.
I've just been waiting for somebody to show up at the door.
Oh, you know, the fort, you know, it was like. Finally, uh. Who's your sponsor? What do you mean sponsor of a county commission? Who's your sponsor? I want in here for with our bell choir.
Actually, it's Ed Edgar Royal, but it's okay.
You know, I had no idea.
Janet Nichols set all that up for all of us, but that's, yeah, he's the fourth person in charge up at the fort.
Well, they said Nichols, and I I couldn't click on Janet, you know, I don't know. You've got it there somewhere. And then, on that, I I get out of there. And I go to that, and I'm like, okay, this is where I'm supposed to go. Can you tell me where I'm supposed, you know, where, how I get to the cemetery? I go, well, we don't, you know, you know.
Well, they're civilian contracted.
And they said, well.
If you're at the Henry Gate.
Back out of the court and and go and get on your GPS and they'll guide you.
Actually, to be honest with you, from the Henry Gate there, you were literally just like three blocks from it.
I know.
It was up on Cavalry, uh, Cavalry Field.
And then I'm going, well, okay, how do I, how do I get out of here? And then he gave you the wrong directions. Let me drive it home. Finally, I said.
Now that part.
It's all a classy thing. I said, just finally, I said, forget it. I just said, forget it. And then I go and try, I finally find my way out of the fort on that side. I end up having to go to Junction City. I get to Junction City, and the roundabouts closed and the highways closed.
You think maybe they were going ahead of you and just shutting things there?
So, so then I take the road.
And actually, Major General's actually shut down the Troop Brigade over there, which is causing all kinds of, all kinds of flurry.
It was nuts. It was the craziest thing. I I've gone on the fort a bunch of times, and I'm, I don't know why.
You know what the irony of that is? The true irony of that is, you know, back before nine eleven, you didn't have to do any of that.
I know.
Yeah, you could just. Like it was.
Well, I'll have to go back to the cemetery and check out the memorial and stuff. What, if I could get in there. Well, I can get in there now on the Ogden side, I guess.
Yeah, they'll just, they'll just scan.
Usually that's what happens, because no, you gotta go to the other side, and that's a mess. It's all.
Well, you should be able to go to either gate. I've gone to either gate.
From my house to Ogden Gate's like ten minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, let's see. Oh, I need to complete the questionnaire. Are you a US citizen? Yes, I just gave you.
Yeah, we got into the really tough question. You gotta go back to the fort.
You really have.
What is the fort to confirm? No. Thank you for completing. Close this window at any time. Oh, this sounds so much nicer. Thank you.
No worries. It's for all of our sending.
Commissioners, I don't have anything during my admin time for you today. Maybe a little bit of a.
So kind of some jackhammer. Appreciate it.
Enjoy the sounds of.
How long are they gonna be?
Enjoy the sounds of progress.
Good.
Ten fifteen, and they said, just come get us when it's time to start the backup. They're really next, Captain.
So just never go back out.
Then again, we won't have heat in the winter, so just be prepared.
There's something.
The problem is that, uh, two-hour delay has just delayed the project another five weeks.
With the usual budget investment.
They know we were sitting here bashing, and they'd probably just continue.
But you're working that. I was probably glad of the break.
Always, always.
Funny thing, yesterday, they didn't even ask me for my driver's license. Isn't that weird after all that?
They don't because they already have you on file. If you'll notice on your car, it's the same picture that you had before. You had, you had, you had a pass before, right?
Yeah, I did.
You've been up on Fort Riley, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I had the pass, and I I just. I thought.
When I went in there, I just said, you know, well.
I should have gone the day before. I was going to, and I said, ah, I can do it.
I went in there, I was just like, yeah, Janet Nichols from the one ID, um, staff. I knew who the sponsor was, so they were just like, and it took like ten minutes.
Well, I've been in there with, uh, friends with, to go to a concert at the middle school that my girlfriend, one of my girlfriends directs at, they they didn't even ask for my key.
They don't? They'll just ask for your pass.
Well, they didn't ask for anything. I was in the backseat. My parents and that, and they.
Yeah, you know, that. Yeah, you know, that one always, that one, um, I haven't bring in any guests up there since I've had a pass, but that's always, that's always, because you can go, you know, back in the day, it was just a paper. It was like an orange paper. And you just stop there and you fill out some information. They give it to you, but it's only the driver. Like they're not worried about the five other people you have.
They didn't even take his ID. It's really strange. I don't know. It was in the evening.
They, and they, they used to just kinda ask you, what's your purpose up here too? I'd be like, well, I'm coming to the nine eleven ceremony, whatever, you know, whatever it is.
It was a smoke building.
Yeah.
Then you can't follow the building.
Oh, do we any number? I don't know.
Oh, I tell you, I was so upset with that because I really wanted to go to that.
It was pretty quick. It was.
Yeah. I figured by the time I got there, it had been over, so, yeah. And I thought, I can't walk in.
Uh, like the last couple of years, there wasn't a lot of dignitaries there. Like I was there, Senator Reddy was there, uh, Sidney Carlin was there. Nobody, nobody else was there.
So you have to make up a new pin number. You're supposed to have a pin.
Make up a new. I wrote it all down on this piece. I'm gonna have to trust. It's, it's like you go through three security questions.
Yeah. Fortunately, they're the same security questions that you go through on these things.
Well, I know. I ran out of.
I have a book at home. I'm serious. I have a book at home of like a hundred and twelve pastors.
I know. Isn't that ridiculous?
And, and still going. I'm sure you guys remember the days where we didn't have passports. We just lived life. And it was so much better.
Didn't even have a cell phone, which is very nice.
Right?
Better put this guy.
You know, messaging really bad. Everybody's coming out here some, but it's your turn.
Spoke too soon. I remember it was Brian, but it's his name. I don't. It's again, the cartridge blow on this. So it says, friend, it's like, what is your favorite?
Hello, I need to talk to you sometime.
Anytime. Anytime. Okay. Just remind me. Like this is a snake.
It's tunnels.
Another request to get access.
Yeah, no, to get to the in-bath access.
Oh.
Sounds like credit reports or anything.
My interesting thing is, I'm interested in what about communities or state and they're going to have.
Welcome.
So I'm sure. I would add here. Sure. I'm sure it's happening. Yeah.
Nothing simple.
We had a. And so we continue my, you know, this one. It was something that not so much. I'm sure we just. To the it's called tax difference on properties. Yeah, yeah, that's. So. So. So what so. It also. So, so.
They're just gonna transfer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Send me home. Well, they have an impact. It shows it.
Right? It just goes like that. It's not just called that.
Hey, wow, which is scary.
Great. Can I talk to you in a second?
No.
Oh, that was easy.
He's probably.
Play your football, Larry.
Yeah. Why play even in stew?
How about you doing something? What are the papers in there?
It's line on the game. Last I heard, seven and a half.
Rush?
Yeah. You gotta always remember, usually the home team gets three, just basis spare. Well, no, Vegas knows something. They must have watching that game the other night and saw something that Arizona, they didn't like, I guess.
It's funny how both teams went in halftime behind. After they both looked, you know, they, they were the dominant teams in their first games in Arizona, really, like sixty some to zero. Yeah. I can't figure out how we give up the big play and cannot coach wide receivers.
It's been consistent. It's not like it's two year deal or, you know, you just under recruited for a year or two. It's been a pretty consistent theme for a while.
Both of those things point to coaching.
You know?
That's position and route running and.
The other thing I noticed the other day too is our, our interior part of the defense is pretty good. I mean, it's pretty solid, but, um, the outside part of the defense. I mean, we, I think we got the athleticism, but maybe we don't quite have the speed on the pass rush. And that kind of tends to help your secondary just a little bit.
Oh, for sure. No, it helps at time. Time.
Couple of years ago, we, we had that on the outside, so that helped immensely. I think we're still kind of redeveloping that a bit. I'm, I'm not saying it's not there. I'm just saying.
Not at the level that it was.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta, you know, Felix and Duke and uh, the other guy stayed injured. I can't remember his name. Duke.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Believe Duke.
Yes. But the one thing climbing does pretty well at is coach quarterbacks. He's got five on NFL rosters right now. Yeah. Carson Wentz, Skylar Thompson, Adrian Martinez, Trey Lance, and Easton Sten.
Has potential, but he has room to grow.
Yes. But he's only nineteen years old. I mean, he's a kid. Even by my standards, he's a kid.
Agreed. One thing I do like though is the two game, first two games have had to have humble him to stay focused and work.
Well, you know, they brought in Matt Wells. He's an offensive guru. Um, it seemed to kind of hit it off pretty good. So he's got good, he's got good mentorship around him, so.
That's. Though, that's why I was expecting a little more on the offensive play calling, because I'm not sure their play calling well yet.
No. I'm not for sure they're completely showing their hand just yet either.
Agreed.
There's a strategy behind that.
Still, but the things you ought to run, you should still look more able to run them than you have.
Well, you know, some of the places they ran on Saturday weren't, um, good calls in the moment. They just didn't hit it. You know, like to play the Stirling Locket, they'd hit that, that's, that's a seventy yard touchdown, easy. With his speed, you know, and so I think you've got some things in place there. You just gotta get it to click. It's just not clicking just yet. What they did say coming out of fall camp that the defense was um, far ahead of the offense and not untypical, uh, early in this football season for a team. It happens in the NFL. See, I've been, I've seen weaknesses in our defense. Yeah, that's the part that bothers me. Particularly the secondary. And like I said, playing defensive back myself, that really bugs me, just. And it's not the, uh, it's not the lack of talent. It's, it's missed assignments. It's blown coverage. It's, you know, it's all fixable.
We'll find out who was better at fixing things this week, Arizona or K-State, because Arizona's coach, the one, what about, said, he said basically the same thing as climate. We got a lot to fix in a short time period.
We'll find most coaches at any level, then, and they're products of habit. Falling to a culture of that. We need to start going and getting people here.
Recruit some commissioners.
Yeah. At least find me a quorum at least.
Great stories.
There is a clock in there. I think there is a clock in there. It's covered by that picture.
That don't do no good.
That's a good thing.
Okay, Brittany.
My commissioner is Brittany Phillips, budget and finance officer here to report the August, uh, the cash flows. We'll start off with economic development for the month of August. We did not break, I'd be ready, but we did spend twelve thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and nine six cents. And bring our total unencumbered cash to for twenty twenty four, three hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred twenty eight dollars. County building cash flows, we brought in thirty three dollars and fifty cents in revenue. And spent sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty nine dollars. Uh, bringing our total uncovered cash balance to two hundred and thirty two thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars. CIP cash flows, we brought in thirty two thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars in revenue and spent twelve thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Bringing our unencumbered cash balance to twenty seven million two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Asset sales tax, obviously, we're no longer accruing any revenue for that, but we did spend a hundred and one thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Bring our unencumbered cash balance to five hundred and then two hundred and thirty one thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars.
And fifty three cents.
One point two percent sales tax, we brought in two hundred and twenty one thousand ninety seven dollars. For the year, bring our unencumbered cash loss to three million and eighty seven thousand and three seventy dollars. Any questions on any of my reports? Any questions on any of my reports?
Interesting, huh? But uh, new sales taxes is kind of holding steady.
Well, just kind of. Jason's, you know, report on how sales tax isn't going up.
Yeah. No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a good day.
You too.
Are that related to the? Cost of eating out, how people are. Reducing that and buying more groceries and. Groceries is a lesser cost than eating out and there's sales tax collected and.
Now, I've kind of looked at that from a personal level, because. It's a little different when you're single. I'm not so for sure that. Groceries are. Less expensive than eating out on that basis.
Or not, groceries are not cheap.
Um, you can't go to lunch. Less than thirty bucks usually.
Yeah, I can't buy a bag of groceries for less than thirty bucks. I mean, six or seven items is literally Dylan's Walmart, IB, anywhere's thirty bucks.
I end up having to go to two or three to get the right.
And it's not like I buy like the most expensive thing, I may not buy the most cheapest thing, but. You know, even just in the middle, I mean, seven or eight items is thirty bucks, you know?
That's what.
And then you have to drive there.
Walmart a thousand dollars. Wow, he got two bags of groceries. Exactly right.
Well, I'm glad, I'm gonna, when I go to Dylan's, I'm on the west side, they're always out of stuff. That reason, so I'm gonna start going to the one over here.
There's, over here is usually pretty well stocked, I've noticed that, yeah.
They're always out of.
I can't find anything in this one. They've got rearranged it right now.
But but their parking lots bigger, you don't have to worry about running in the same, I mean, you know.
That's true, until you get out to the street.
Dylan's West, that parking lot is always full.
It's packed and then it's so tight, it's hard to. Actually, when you get the big trucks and vaccine, you can't.
And it wasn't better when they were on the other side over there where Marshall's and stuff was.
And they have a lot. And the gas station is really easy to get in and out of.
Not always.
But this one over here.
Yeah, this one over here, the one on the west side.
Neither one's designed great.
This is kind of like, we need a grocery store, we're just gonna put it here.
Yeah.
Make it work.
We're just moving from this side of the lot to the other side.
Yeah, it's like we have a congested gas station, let's put a car wash right beside it.
Yeah. And a coffee shop.
We got some.
Which is better than the skating rink that used to be there.
I'm so glad we're getting another coffee shop.
We just had another one open up in the new office building, too. And where? The new office building.
Oh, I've seen.
Brothers Coffee. Opened up with a spot there.
What is the coffee?
What office building?
The new office building.
H state.
Yeah.
Well, the new store, my. Mail building has a, with Nina's.
Yes, they did.
Yeah. It's almost never open.
Oh, really?
Well, anytime we've been there for stuff, it's, you know, it's just closing or.
But that's coffee shops.
That's an exaggeration.
They're open from nine to two with. Two thirty minute breaks in between that, just like bankers.
Kidding me?
Oh, you're having the same trouble.
Not not just your mobile phone, but who your carrier is.
Oh, I didn't get.
Oh, you're kidding me?
I didn't get that one.
Oh, really?
No.
Yeah, I think I got that.
Sounding more and more like I don't really want to go that bad.
And I don't know if it can upset this guy, ask me why my home phone is, and I don't have it.
Well, I think it's got an R A.
Not approved.
Yeah, they're not gonna let you in.
You don't know that, especially if it's driving all over the fort, have you?
Stay where you're at, we'll be there.
Yeah.
I'm ready to call somebody, is it where?
Gonna stay at home from now on, it's cheaper.
I got, I finally got home, I said, this is it.
An hour of your time you'll never get back.
Yeah. That was more than that.
Thank you, terrorists.
Girls, we, that kind of school, you get on the plane.
I always do, I I don't know, I must have a hidden tattoo or somewhere that says scan me. Because everywhere I go, it's TSA just hates me.
You're on the list.
I must be, I must be, I'm serious.
My, my. Daughter's last name is Wayhead. They get stopped.
Last name like Ford, they just.
Actually, it's not. Of Islam, that's way bad.
Oh, really?
Yeah. He's actually Scottish, but the there's. Oh, so their names opposite.
That's not discriminatory at all.
Place it goes.
Hey, ladies, doing okay? Right, we're in enforcement, huh?
I'll get this once, now I gotta go back for some reason.
Four times. When I said it takes fifteen minutes, they weren't kidding.
Takes more at least.
I've already done the electronic signatures. But now it's like me go back thinking of them again, so racing.
I struggle with that, man. Usually do, but on this one. Straight forward.
Probably you get home today, there'll be someone with a scanner.
I'm just waiting for someone to add. I'm waiting for a person to be there, and go, we're taking you in.
The black suburban pulls up outside, I'll get in.
I'm not.
You'll show up at M Bath and, oh, you're Commissioner Ford, this way.
You are not going off the tube today, sorry.
You didn't fill out the right information, yeah.
We're worried about you, by the way. You're on a list, same list as that TSA. Okay. So let's hear a little bit about the Comzy United Way.
Did you get through it? Yeah.
Finding me.
Okay. You here, do okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Sherri Moran on the Comzy United Way work group. For several decades, Riley County has partnered with Comzy United Way to support the mission of creating long lasting changes. By addressing the underlying causes of community problems. This year, Riley County was selected as one of the pay center campaigns and held our month long campaign during August. The official campaign season for Comzy United Way kicks off on September seventeenth. For the twenty twenty four campaign, the work group consisted of Amy Mangus, myself, and Elizabeth Ward. We again offered a payroll deduction option for employees, help countywide campaign activities. And have the director of Comzy United Way participate in education programs in the county. Which included Tara Clausen speaking to the V O C C and employee groups on the value of the United Way. Um, community bake sale with employees donating food items for bid. And baby picture guessing game with the department heads and elected officials. Workplace flocking with pink flamingos everywhere. Riley County United Way T-shirts and jeans days, and then a raffle for eight hours of P T O. We also had two elected officials challenge Riley County employees to donate by tripling donation impact up to a thousand dollars. Um, in twenty twenty two, we reignited our United Way participation with a two week campaign raising four thousand seven hundred dollars in pledges. In twenty twenty three, Riley County hosted a month long campaign raising seven thousand six hundred and thirty six dollars in pledges. And then in twenty twenty four, our work group had a very successful year, increasing overall participation to nineteen and a half percent of our employees. And raising ten thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars in pledges. Um, fiscal impact for this is eight hours of P T O, which we have raffle tickets. So Commissioner Ford, would you do the honors of drawing the name?
Yes.
I'm drawing over there.
What if I pick myself? Do I get free, do I get free extra eight hours?
Sure.
Oh, this is good.
Oh, yes, Cindy Cabrio.
All right, that's it.
So which department won overall, because I'm supposed to owe lunch to somebody.
Yes, so that would be the registered deeds office, they had one hundred percent participation.
Awesome, okay. We'll get with Amy, we'll schedule a time to get that taken care of.
I had a question. Because I meant to come in and do the baby picture thing, because I just wondered, did. Was there anybody able to identify anybody's baby pictures, how bad?
Few, um, you have to check with Amy, she had the results on that, but there were a few, so.
I meant to go, I meant to come in and I had the wrong week, I mean, they came in the next week, that was last week, oh.
It wasn't that easy.
I'm sure. Actually, I always thought it would be interesting, but I.
We're all cute babies, makes you wonder what the hell happened.
I think mine was then, but it's much still black and white, everybody else is.
That's a bit of red flag right there. I think actually one of mine was in black.
Figure out, but the toddler picture, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious about that, too, I'll have to ask Amy, okay.
Hmm.
Well, glad to see that we increased our overall pledges.
Yes.
Pretty significantly, so it keeps. Keeps rising, so. That's what Tara said, she said, you got to keep after it for a few years and then. Um, yeah. Good. Good work, everybody, appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. Next commissioner, you have the chamber at nine forty five.
Well, I got to the thing that says yes to have your name, it's on your I D.
Oh, yeah.
I put, I started off with Greg, and it should be Gregory, but it didn't say that at the start. So I found things so that you can edit it, I went through it, it's still.
Oh, they did say that on the original sheet, you got to put everything in there is exactly.
No.
On the email.
On the email, I, they had my names.
Say, make sure that you put your information exactly as it is on your driver's license.
Well, I didn't to begin with, and now I can't go back and edit it.
I like those directions, those are really. Good, it reminds me of one of my favorite MASH episodes, trying to diffuse to them or trying to diffuse an unexploded artillery shell. Okay. In the camp. And the one of us reading from the manual, tells him, okay, cut the red wire. And then he cuts the red wire, he says, but first.
But first, go in the other.
I think at that point, as our call, they ran and I think it blew up. That might be.
But first.
Never forgotten that.
Oh, goodness.
Leave anybody out.
I didn't see the list, there's a list of these, hasn't done it, it's. He's the only one at this desk, but they asked the other, the other ones that have missed it, that's. But I didn't see where it said. Anywhere. You should be playing. Or your name looks.
Okay. That doesn't hurt anything, but I figured I'd get like an email of something saying, you're good to go. Instead, it'll probably show up there and go, no, sorry. I'll just be stuck there for four hours. Because I'll have to call an Uber or something.
How long is that tour supposed to last?
I think it's one to four, four thirty.
One thirty to four. It's a long tour.
It's a, it's a big go, but it takes a long time, just.
There's like a half an hour of check in or something they have to do onsite, too, so.
But even once you got in, we went in and they're going through here and you go down some stairs, and I'm just. At the end, I thought, God, they said something about that inch or two, and I thought, oh, man, we got to go back, they opened the door, we're back where we started, I had no idea. Wonder if I just completely start over.
They still have a bunch of unfilled positions, only they're struggling to fill positions there for a while.
Yeah, most of them aren't the um, the science side, they're just kind of like the. Maintenance.
Support, right, yeah, yeah. Support and security and.
They pretty much have all those fields, people that are coming from Plum Island or elsewhere. Either on their way or already here. You got to remember that facility was supposed to be. Twelve hundred plus, and it's somewhere in the. Upper four hundreds at this point in time, so it's really pared down. What it was originally supposed to be. Now they have the ability to, you know. Flexibility to enlarge, but. I don't see that happening right away. For as long as it's taken to. Hit the building, build and just get operational, I really don't see that happening anytime soon. It's been a process. That it has.
So what's the spread today?
Last I heard, it was seven, seven.
They're new, will be updated.
Morning, Aaron, morning, Christian.
Well, thank you.
I love that.
Thanks.
You say, okay. I have to scan it to figure out where you.
Or you can just go to um. It's friends of Fort Riley. Museum dot org, that's the website.
All right, capital letters or?
Oh, lowercase. Friends of Fort Riley Museum.
Friends.
Dot org.
Is it spelled out, Fort?
Yeah.
That's probably capitalized.
No, they left it all.
Fort.
Easy peasy, Lord.
Fort Riley. Museum.
They did figure out. If you don't mean that short.
Friends of Fort Riley Museum. Dot com.
Or.
Dot org.
But even if you just type it in, it'll pop.
Okay.
It'll populate.
Everybody wants to scan everything. I just.
Oh, yeah. We even got it on election stuff now.
Just.
You know, how can that be that secure, these scans?
Even with my IT expertise, I can't.
And who ever invented that anyway? Scan in the Q R code. What is that? Where'd that come from? I think China's behind. They're behind all this bad stuff.
Well, it makes an interesting tattoo because you always wonder, does it really work? On somebody's neck or.
We'll all have chips pretty soon.
True.
Well, we probably already do. We just don't know. Can you go in for a test? I'm sure there's one in one of my knees.
Yeah, they were probably.
I'd have one here, I know. That was one of the theories behind the COVID shot, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what the airport's going to do. They didn't catch me with one knee. They didn't stop me, but two, two fake knees are probably. I don't think.
There metal in there?
Titanium.
Titanium? So you're like the Bionic Woman?
Yeah. I remember.
I run really fast now.
No. Can walk pretty fast. They won't let you back. What are they saying? No, you can't.
Just got the spinning circle of frustration. You and Commissioner Ford will both get escorted out.
You probably get a message. Bring Greg back to the keyboard.
Somebody I walked up here right in time for the spinning circle of frustration.
Ready? Yeah, go ahead, Darren.
All right, commissioners, thank you for having us. This morning, Darren told the, uh, everybody down at Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, covered a couple of things. Uh, first off, some, some upcoming events. Uh, we are hosting, uh, great pleasure to host the Kansas Economic Development Conference here in two weeks. So that's on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, uh, September down at the, uh, down at the conference center. Uh, that's a joint event between, uh, and this is the first year it's being done this way as a joint event. It's kind of following the same, uh, model as the Kansas Tourism Conference does, where you take the professional organization and then the state, um, the state agency. And so, this is the Kansas Economic Development Alliance, which is the state professional organization, and then the Kansas Department of Commerce, uh, jointly putting this event on, um, uh, it's just a reminder that we're on the, on the radar of these kinds of groups in this, in this region. We hosted the Chamber of Commerce executives of Kansas last year, hosting the Economic Development Conference this year and hosting the Tourism Conference next year. Uh, so, it's a, uh, it's good to have those regularly coming to the area, showcase some of the work that's going on, but also bring folks from around the state here. Um, Lieutenant Governor Poland will be, will be kicking that event off, uh, on, uh, on, uh, September twenty-third. We've got a great program of, of, uh, of speakers and sessions. We'll be highlighting the, um, some of the work that's been done in childcare here and with the childcare, uh, Community Accelerator Project, um, as, uh, as part of a, uh, a childcare session and then a number of other things. And this will also be a good opportunity for us to highlight, uh, the region to, uh, Kansas Department of Commerce reps, so they'll have their folks in town, um, the folks that do business recruitment that work projects within the state. And so, be a good opportunity to highlight some of the, some of the things that are going on, um, with the university, with MBAF, with some projects in the area, as you know, um, um, the new, um, building that was just opened at M T C here this last week. Uh, some of those things from a workforce standpoint, from a physical space and building standpoint, uh, there's really good things to sell in this region right now. So we'll be, we'll be highlighting that to, uh, to all those folks in attendance. Um, second event I wanted to bring up was, uh, and invite you to is, uh, uh, we work with Spark and I've updated previously on Spark, uh, on the entrepreneurial side of things. So this is everything they, they're managing the, and administering the, the various different network Kansas loan programs, uh, the local, um, funds, the new things that were added this last year, the Elevate Fund and the Empower, uh, Fund, those are micro loan programs up to fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, they're working with the SWC and with other partners, including Black Entrepreneurs, the Flint Hills. There's a veterinarian group for, for veteran entrepreneurs, um, working with them on programming, on other resources and, and things for, for entrepreneurs and small business owners. Uh, they are going through a rebrand process that was just launched virtually, uh, kind of soft launch this week to innovate twenty-four. Uh, so check them out online, really strong, uh, new website. They will also be going into a new location, um, in Aggieville, along with the Small Business Development Center. And so, and that'll be in, in Aggieville or even the, in the, um, you know, in a, in the Marshall District down there. Uh, there's going to be a ribbon cutting on the tenth of October at four P M down in that space. So, uh, keep an eye out for that, uh, that ribbon cutting invitation, but, uh, there'll be a ribbon cutting followed by an open house. So, uh, we'd encourage you, if, if schedule allows, to try to make it down and, and, um, and, uh, learn a little bit more about some of the collaboration that's going on there. And, and again, I think this is, you know, there's the funding and the access to capital piece. There's the entrepreneur education piece, and then there's also the innovation piece. And this is where Stephanie Pierce, that's leading, um, leading Spark slash innovate twenty-four now, and her background, um, coming from Case State Innovation Partners and doing work with the university and, and, uh, out of that commercialization and tech transfer office. I think she's very well positioned to, um, uh, continue to, to, uh, lead the effort when it comes to how do we best as a community and as a region, how do we best leverage, K-State and technologies that come out of K-State to make sure that we're providing, um, landing spots for that here in the local area and the university and the foundation are both doing some really good things in that space right now, too. So, uh, it's an important part of our economic development strategy going forward. Speaking of economic development strategy, um, we mentioned, uh, previously and, and, um, thank Commissioner Ford for serving on the technical advisory, uh, committee for some, that provided some feedback in, in this process early on, but, uh, we plan to roll out the, uh, the growth plan. So this is an update. Remember we did, um, Chamber did a plan back in twenty seventeen that was rolled out in twenty eighteen that was, um, Gerner Manhattan Project that then became Region Reimagined. We, we, um, we dialed in, um, some very specific things that were very, um, uh, local specific things that needed to be done from a job creation standpoint, talent attraction retention standpoint. A lot of these entrepreneurship initiatives came out of that, um, um, you know, very specific items there that would have direct impact, whether it's, whether it's increased access to capital, new loan programs, uh, other programming to support entrepreneurs and then innovation. So those four areas were, were the, were the focuses. Uh, this growth plan looks specifically at some items that can drive, uh, economic growth here. So more people, more jobs, um, making more money, uh, things that create additional workforce, things that create, additional spending power in our local economy and things that bring dollars in from outside, um, that, that importation of dollars. And so that is going to get rolled out in, uh, in October. I'll have some more information here shortly on kind of what that, what that rollout looks like and, and, uh, and all of that, that the plan there. Just wanted to make sure you're all aware of the plan there. That's still going. Uh, just finalizing some, some things on that, but, uh, we'll be rolling that out here next month in October. So, um, anticipate that we'll be, um, uh, obviously in front of all of you with, with some of those details and, and copies of that plan and, and that's going to set the stage for our, uh, our economic development strategy here going forward. So we're excited about that and, uh, uh, excited about the potential that, uh, that that holds. So happy to answer any questions on any of those free items or others, or if not, we'll, we'll have Christian come up and, and, uh, update on some of the military buildings on.
Where is that space down in Aggieville?
Uh, it is the old, uh, Pizza Hut office space, so very, uh, the Family Foundation space. Um, yep, yep, uh, well, not on, um, twelve street. So, uh, south on twelve street, a block to the north of the city park. So not the Pizza Hut restaurant location, but the.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, worked with the Family Foundation and, and, uh, and were able to, kudos to them. Stephanie will talk some more about this. I'm going to get out too far ahead of that, but, um, kudos to them for, for, um, uh, looking at this community and, and even though, um, um, they don't live here anymore, looking at this community and saying, hey, this is something that's worth investing in and.
One day for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. And working with Spark to, to, um, come up with some space there. There can be a front door for, for those services and a front door for folks that are looking for it. Again, S P C is going to be in there. It's going to be a place that you can go with. And, uh, if you're, you know, if you're looking to start a business, grow a business, just want more information on, on some of these new resources that are available funding wise or educational wise for entrepreneurs, that's your adventure spot to go.
Yep.
So be a good front door for that.
Okay.
So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Christian, that's all you.
Good morning. Um, I just want to give a couple of highlights. Last, uh, actually last week, we had our M R C lunch, uh, which featured the Wamigo Honor Flights. And so just a huge shout out to Sean Hornig and Suzie Sprinkle, who are, um, ultimately the student sponsors, um, and chaperones. But we had the pleasure of hearing from Laura Bossi and Sarah, um, Breed, um, and also our veteran Mike Riley, who shared their experience on their recent D C trip. Um, and just the humbling stories, um, especially for Mike as a veteran, a Vietnam veteran, how he was able to, you know, go to D C and kind of have those, um, wounds healed. And as most of our, uh, Vietnam veterans who didn't get that welcome home ceremony. And so if anybody's interested, the next Honor Flight is October twenty-third at ten thirty, um, at Wamigo High School. Um, if anybody is interested, um, in going on an Honor Flight, um, you can always contact the Military Relations Office, myself, um, or reach out to Sean Hornig, who does work at the Wamigo High School. Um, so they are looking for people to go on these Honor Flights. Like I said, it is seventy-two, two hours of an experience from leaving here. Um, you know, touring the sites of Washington D C Memorial, and then, like I said, having that proper welcome home ceremony. Uh, our next M R C is October second at eleven thirty at the Holiday Inn Campus, um, and it will feature Monica Forrester, who runs Valley Hope. Uh, yesterday we had the nine eleven ceremony. So thank you to Lori Bishop and the Flint Hills Volunteer Center, um, for featuring the insightful accounts of British General Bill Turner and First Sergeant Kevin Walker, who shared their experiences and reflections, um, of the tragic events of September eleventh, um, two thousand and one. Um, and so like I said, it was just a, a great time to hear those stories and their resilience, um, in such a tragic moment. We did, um, Art in the Middle. It is time for AUSA Annual Trip. Um, so, uh, the trip is actually the fourteenth through the sixteenth. Um, and looking forward to hearing from Secretary Wormuth and her focus bulls for, um, the Army, um, and also seeing our one I D comrades, and then meeting with our congressional staffers on our federal, um, agendas for this year. Um, I gave you guys a flyer, uh, but, um, if anybody's interested, it is Apple Day. Um, it's taken me a long time to stop saying Apple Days, but, uh, it is, uh, the thirty, uh, thirty-eighth Annual Apple Day. And the festivities will take place October fifth from nine to three. Uh, it's a free public event. Um, it is Fort Riley's biggest open house. So static displays, vendors, tours of the museums, um, you know, the F R Gs are out there baking goods. Uh, but most importantly, the biggest thing is, um, it is the time to taste Libby Custer's famous apple pie. So they do have pre-orders going on right now. Um, and you can preorder them now September twenty-seventh. If you're interested in a pie, um, I do have it posted on our social media page. Uh, but you can go to, um, friendsoffortrileymuseum.org, um, and order your pie. Um, and one of the things that they are doing different this year, um, and this is actually thanks to partnership with K-State, but if pie is not your jam, you don't like pies, um, you do have a chance to actually purchase a pie.
Who couldn't like pie?
I know.
My gosh.
Some people don't like apple pie. Some people like pumpkin, but, um, they are offering, um, you a chance to donate a pie to single soldiers. Um, and one of the things that they are doing is, um, if you order a pie and you, uh, check the box to donate him to a single soldier, K-State is actually, um, allowing us to store the pies, um, at their facility. And then once the holidays hit, they will actually heat up the pies, um, and then we will donate them to single soldiers. Um, so that they have the ability to, um, have something warm during the holiday season. So like I said, you can go to friendsoffortrileymuseum.org, um, get your pies ordered by September twenty-seventh. They will be have pies, um, during Apple Days, but, um, they will only be selling pie by the slice, not whole pies, um, on actually October fifth. Um, and then just training updates. So Second Brigade, um, is now at the National Training Center in California, which they will be there for a month. Uh, but First Brigade is in the field. So, uh, as you hear these sounds of freedom rattling your windows, um, just know that it's First Brigade currently, um, completing some training requirements and missions. Uh, and then the last couple of events coming on, uh, September twenty-first, um, at the Adventure Park on Fort Riley, they are hosting their Oktoberfest. Um, and so German food, German music, and then at three P M they will have a Volksmarch. So it's the first time they've had, um, Oktoberfest in probably almost, uh, ten years. So I'm glad that they are bringing it back. Like I mentioned, October second is our M R C lunch, and then, uh, all Apple Days is October fifth. So can you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, guys. Have a good weekend.
Go Cats. Yes, our cats. Keep forgetting that. I saw a meme on that, that the trophy, you know, like rivalry trophy should be like a scratching place.
Somebody had to get on that one.
Wrong kind of cats.
What?
It's like a little kitty cat, you know? But even Wildcats have to start off as babies. Come on, Mitch.
Yeah, they're really cute, too. Those little wildcat babies.
That's a thing?
Sure.
Kevin, how you doing?
We're doing okay.
Good.
Interesting to see how, uh, Wildcats compete with all the local high schools. They could have games on Friday night. Now, Manhattan has theirs tonight, but Wyler County and, and of course have the big game, Wamigo and Rock Creek, like.
Well, Manhattan's playing, uh, free state, yeah.
Yeah.
Four, four versus five in the rankings.
That's tonight.
Tonight.
Tonight. He's talking about the Friday night competition.
Friday night games when you have all the other high schools, but it sounds like, uh, it's TV driving it.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Thursday night games and Friday night games and Saturday games.
Which is money driving it. And so, yeah.
Okay.
You ready, Kevin?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I come to represent the area council on aging and certainly as I come, I, I come with extreme fights to all of you for the funding that you gave us this year and, certainly it has given an imp, uh, a lot of, uh, encouragement to all the different agencies we represent. Uh, certainly as we met, uh, we had the, the full council last Tuesday morning, and certainly we talked about it and certainly encouraged them all to, to take if they got some extra money to try to go down and reduce some of the cost of the meals. Because that's really a way we could, uh, minister to the community to, to do that. And of course, we know that Randolph had to go up as high as ten dollars a meal for, for their residents there. So they're hoping that they can make some decreases and it, but it certainly is a, a great, uh, input to, uh, give a little, uh, encouragement to everybody. And if I can come and tell you that, we had reports from all the different agencies last Tuesday, and certainly it's encouraging. I think the effect of the, uh, uh, COVID, uh, embargo kind of has the, uh, diminished some, and all the groups are reporting better attendance, more, more activities, et cetera. We have the area agency on aging, which is, uh, uh, represent our county representing in the sixteen county area. And they are, of course, are sponsoring a big festival, a slide on the twenty, uh, fifth, I believe, called the Sunflower Festival. And, uh, we are excited because every count, every one of the sixteen counties gets to choose a volunteer of the year. And Wyler County has chosen Linda Toomire of Riley to be our, our recipient, and, uh, she will be honored and she is quite excited about it. Uh, she has, she's certainly, if you ever want to hear of a person who is certainly giving of herself, she has a great heart and volunteers everywhere she can, active in her church, active in the, the senior citizens of Randolph, active in the city of Glitterville, um, has a great heart for veterans, and I don't. And I don't know how many trips she makes down to Topeka with supplies for the Veteran Hospital down there. She will carry down carloads of gifts to be given into the hospital there. So the veterans that are there will have gifts they can go through and choose to give the people and she is They make quilts by the dozens to put out as lap rooms, et cetera. So she's very deserving of that particular part. And I know Rose has been here before, your commission. She told us Tuesday she is retiring. So she is going to take A need of breath. And then the home care hospice, Chris Nolte reported that they The last few months, they've had a sixteen percent increase in their activities up there. And so over the That time period. And in the month of July and August, they have ministered to a hundred and fourteen different individuals Out there. And most of you are aware that the home care hospice is the only nonprofit home care hospice in the county. So in other words, it's an entity that Is not out for profit. So we have about four, three or four institutes in the county, but home care hospice, the only nonprofit. And then we had a representative from Letterville there and he gave a report that their numbers are increasing. And they are working to get money to get an A E D involved in the community buildings. So to start off with, they had a lake contest where they took pictures of people's legs. And at the Letterville Hollow Blue, you people could vote on whose legs they caught the best. And they raised about five hundred and fifty dollars through that.
People have some legs upstairs.
Obviously, obviously, they need a little more. No, I have to admit, I submitted my legs as part of it, but I did not win. Maybe there must have, there must have been some Then we had a represent, Daryl Wood represents Ogden. And they are quite active over there. They're trying to Do some work on getting the history of Ogden put together. They're working and doing stuff with the cemeteries, trying cleaning gravestones and Sort of getting those, both the Protestants and Catholic cemeteries in line. And they're working awful hard on the overlook out there, too. So there's got a lot of process there. The only discouraging part is Ogden, they do have a program set up that they can bring meals on wheels to Ogden. The only problem is that you can't find anybody who's willing to come over from Ogden to pick up the meals, Carry them back to Ogden and then distribute them. And I know a couple of years ago, they tried to do that for Riley and Letterville. Obviously, the meals are, you can make them here in Manhattan, you can deliver them out there. But you have to get somebody who's willing to come down and get them. Then you have to have somebody who's willing to deliver them once they get to the town. And unfortunately, despite all your tries to get people to do it, nobody Volunteered. So that's really kind of a drawback in that part. But Ogden is kind of coming back to life with their stuff. On the Randolph group, they are really increasing quite a bit down there. And interesting, they will next Monday have an interesting time. They're going up to a place that Mister Schultz has restored an old farmhouse, if you know enough of Northern Riley County. It's the old Barley Homestead. And they bought this old stone house, over a hundred years old, built in eighteen hundreds. And they have added on to it. They call it Oakstone. And it's going to be a building that you can have a hunting lodge and his wife loves quilt. And they'll have a roofing lodge there, too. And so the group is going to go up there next next Monday where they're They're gathering. And they will be honoring Margie Wooler, who will be celebrating her hundred and third birthday. And she is still very active and everything along that line. So Randolph's keeping pretty good. The Riley Senior Meals is all together. They meet every second and fourth Wednesday For their their group. Now, Letterville meets every every Tuesday and Randolph meets every Monday. So they keep going pretty good. So Riley is doing that. We have R S V P, as you've heard, she they were very instrumental on the nine eleven. Lori Bishop on that was yesterday. They also are celebrating this year, their fiftieth year of work here in Manhattan. And they also do a lot with getting volunteers for people to drive People to doctor's appointments to in the fall, they get people to go out and rake leaves for senior citizens who can't do that, et cetera. So she's got a lot of things going on with all that going on. And then Liz Nelson represented Manhattan Senior Center of Riley County. And they all all coming up with all types of extra activities over there. You can do yoga, you can do All types of exercise, have different speakers come in. So a lot of things are happening there. The Silver Hair Legislature, we really, that's an appointment put out by the area agency on aging area. And they have not really got a person noted for that for us. So we didn't get a report from them. And then Judy Kimball represents theme Dell area. And they have been very active in And making sure that that playground gets set up on where the old theme Dell school used to be. And so they've been very active working, getting that program together. And they have a group that is going forward there. So I can say that all around, things are looking a lot more encouraging. We got a lot of activities going and certainly I would encourage you, if you happen to be free on a Monday or a Tuesday or a second or fourth Wednesday, Just stop by one of those senior centers. I know Mister McKinley made it up to Randolph one time, but you'll have a good chance to visit with these people. And they get a feel for exactly what all is going on. Randolph is very good at having programs. And they have A person there from the Riley County Health Department there last Monday. And he basically went a review over vaccinations, which is quite fascinating because You know, they he discussed all the different vaccinations that are out there and the need and And several people had questions about how much of a need there was to have stuff like that. So it's a positive all the way through. And then just a reminder to you that you, as a county commission, Can appoint a representative to come to our meetings and represent you at the board. We have Carl Treese, who is a representative for John Ford, but we have no representatives from the other two. And basically, what it amounts to, you would just be appointing a representative who would come and he would sit at our on our meetings and He would be able to be kind of a, I suppose, a sounding board for you at times, a little bit Of what goes on at those meetings and such at that time. So so it's, you know, kind of I am impressed with all the activities that are taking place. The work, the ability of people to step forward and want to volunteer and be a part of this. And as we said many, many times, These things are indeed a real important asset to the community. There are several people who come to these weekly gatherings and they will tell me that My relatives know that on Monday or on Tuesday, we you don't do anything with us. We go to the senior citizens Activity. That's our activity for the day. And then a lot of times, that especially at Randolph, Afterwards, they get through, they play dominoes and stuff, really have great fun together. It's a great gathering for for everybody. It's, you know, when you actually get to some of these people who especially like Margie Wooler, hundred and three, that's about the only time she gets out to Interact with people. So it's a great positive. So We appreciate the support you're given because it does allow us to know that we can carry forth and do a pretty Strong program for the seniors of our area. And certainly, as one who comes from the northern part of the county, You know, we invite you to come up there, especially if you want to go to that Oakstone. If you know where the old town of Winkler is, Just to the east of the old town of Winkler, there's a little road called School Branch Road. And I always told the students when I taught American history, we had a Roddy County history class. And we would drive up that old school branch road. And I said, you know, this reminds me an awful lot of driving up the old Blue River Valley. Because you have the big stone houses, you have stone fences along the road. You have just, you're really driving back into an area that's really quite convenient. You go up one little curve around and you see a circular stone enclosure. Now, what I've told that the original pioneers who settled there, they are buried inside of this The stone enclosure, probably to make But there's the big stone enclosure still there. But there's some beautiful stone buildings along that road. It's about a two miles, two or three mile stretch that you're going to just imagine yourself back In the old days. It's a fascinating area. So if you ever have have an afternoon free, do that. I mean, the Rodney County Historical Society is working on setting up a tour of Northern Riley County. So we'll see what comes about, but I've met with them a couple of times. I do have a Thursday morning breakfast group and they said, why don't you give us a tour? You talk about it all the time. So we left Manhattan at eight o'clock in the morning and got back at five o'clock in the evening and we saw Northern Riley County. So we had a chance to get up and see all those different spots. It's a fascinating place. I did take an airplane flight once over Northern Riley County, got down and I told the The pilot, which was Gary Siegel, said, you know, this isn't quite right. It takes me a whole semester to show my class all this Rodney County stuff. And you showed it to me in an hour. That's not fair. It's there. Anyway, that's what we have stories so far. We appreciate all your support. And I know that You know, for you, as you have a lot of different entities relying on you and certainly giving you a lot of pressure and And like I say, I always told my students, you people are the ones who deserve the greatest fights because you're working with your fellow citizens, your Your neighbors, your relatives, and sometimes you don't make them very happy. So that's, you have to have a lot of Fights for that. Any questions?
Actually, can I talk with you post meeting here? You're the last item on here. I actually ate dinner the other night with the sixty plus three dollar.
And I did that. So the group Wanted to give you a thank you note. So we have a thank you note from everybody. I'll notice that we tried to get them all to With the representing itself. We really appreciate it. It was A great sigh of relief, that's for sure. Any cohort questions? If not, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay. That was the last item on this morning's agenda. Short meeting today. So take it. Yeah. I guess we got one other item of business to to handle, right?
So what is it?
I've been tossing back and forth on this one. This is a game that when the schedule came out, Concerned me right from the get go. I don't understand the point spread on this either, but I think it's going to take a lot of points to win this game. So Friday night, it's at home. Think we'll recover a little bit from Saturday. Saturday's game might have I think maybe a little little bit of a fire. So the fact that we're playing at home, it's Friday night, I'll probably be into it. I'm going to say good guys thirty six, bad guys thirty four.
Catch, Greg.
I got thirty five seventeen.
Okay. Catherine?
I don't know. I have several numbers down.
Can only take two.
I know. I'm going to go for a little higher number. Forty six thirty three.
Nancy?
Thirty two sixteen.
One about the opposite, everyone, twenty one twenty.
Thinking like I am is going to be close. Both teams have the ability to score points. We'll see. Or not score like they showed last week.
Could be against better defenses this week, you would think.
Wake up a little here.
Well, get just get used to having some late night games moving forward here for hopefully next week, nine thirty P M.
Nine thirty P M?
Yeah.
Next week.
Against B Y U.
On Saturday.
Well, better take a nap. I plan on sleeping in on Sunday, whatever. Okay.
Oh, but I already think that's
I don't have anything else to speak of, so.
Well, I would make a motion to adjourn the September twelfth meeting of the Raleigh County Commission.
Second. Been moved to second to adjourn the September twelfth meeting of the Raleigh County Commission. All in favor? Good weekend.
Have a good weekend. Go Cats.
It's been an update.
Did you?
I'm ripping all through it now.
Still winning your laugh like Monday?
You know, I I managed not to.
Well, can you start like a new job?